Call this meeting order and tonight we're going to be led in pledge by Milan Huggett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here to our second of several scheduled budget meetings. Before I turn it over to, I guess, Mr. Sandvik, Mr. Odom, do you have any?
Well, tonight you have kind of the first version that you see of the full budget, but no revenue yet, obviously. These are requests and initial ideas of what maybe we need to put in the budget. Since three of you are new tonight, and maybe the first time you've looked at this, I've asked Mr. Sandvik, we're going to kind of go down through it and let you see where things are stored, so that once you kind of familiarize yourself with where it might be, then I think it'll be much easier next time. So whatever time, what we need from you tonight, we'll do that and go through it. So we'll let Mr. Sandvik, since he prepared it, walk us through it. Mr. Sandvik?
Well, the first item I have for tonight, this is the timeframe for us to amend our Race to the Top federal project. And they, the state kind of did us in on this initially. Our initial budget was from July 1st through June 30th, and then they changed it to be October 1st through September 30th. So this amendment, there are two main additions to it. The first line of numbers, fourth column over has $27,200. That is additional money we will need for maintenance of our Compass Learning, which we purchased with our Race to the Top funds. This invoice is due before October 1st, so I'm amending so we can pay it and not, we've had to beg and get permission to pay it after October 1st in the last year, and this will fix that switch in our fiscal year to the federal fiscal year. The other piece, Kevin Whittington, our data, I don't know, data interpreter?
I forget the official title of data, Coach.
I'm drawing blank on his title.
He analyzes the data for the school system.
I forget the title.
Testing.
Professional development of the students for individual teachers and groups.
Yeah. Well, he was caught by the same thing. Basically, I need to have one year of this project with 15 months of pay to him, so I can make that transition to an October 1 start. That's what this amendment does. And the recommended motion is to approve the third Race to the Top budget amendment for the third year of the program as presented, and I'll be happy to answer the questions.
There are four years of the program, so this will complete year three. A total of, what was the total? Three point?
3.8, 3.9?
3.6 is the figure that sticks in my mind from when I was basically, something like that. For four years.
It was almost three and three quarters.
Yeah.
So this is actually an actionable item. We just happen to have it as a part of this special call meeting?
Right.
Yes, because he needs to do that.
Okay, alright. Then he's made the recommendation. We need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So move?
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes.
And... The next file, if you'd hit, okay. When you bring up your menu, touch and hit the menu, hit that, hopefully the recents, but if it's showing documents in the upper left-hand corner, hit that. And the next file we'll look at, and I'll wait till y'all are there, is the 2014... All of these are 2014. That doesn't tell much, does it? Yes, the 2014 GPS Budget Summary by Object Code. It's a four-page file. It's not the 31-page one. And the first page of it ends with a labor subtotal. Okay, okay. This is the format that, this summary is a little bit different. But this is the format we have worked with for probably 10 years now. Each line item in this summary adds up all of those positions or all of that type of expenditure throughout our general purpose school amendment. The top line, they're just ranked in account number order, object code, is the superintendent. We have one superintendent. Next line down, principals, supervisors, directors, and so forth, so forth, all the way down to in-service training, the various labor categories that we have. We have, based on what we've heard from the state, built in a 1.5% raise. And so you'll see the first, well, after the 101 and then the description, under 2013-14 budget, those are the dollars, and the blue numbers over are the positions we currently have in this version of the budget. When you go over to the second column of black numbers, that is our current year budget, we have done very little amending so far. You'll see lots of amendments at these meetings over the next three months. And then the third set of black numbers shows you our increase or decrease in dollars. And then you see the percentage in the next column of black numbers over. Then we see the number of positions in blue and the position increases in blue. I use blue for the positions and black for the numbers. And then I also show the prior year, the 2011-12 school years, final numbers, and the positions that we had that year.
Mr. Sandvik?
Yes, sir.
Under 369 and 370?
Yes, sir.
The budget increase for the subs?
Right.
Is that, is that based on the Reform Act kicking in in 2014?
Yes, sir, it is. Our, and we will have a recommendation on the next agenda to award that bid. The low bidder actually trimmed rates a little bit for the August through the end of December period. And that, but then January 1, we asked for separate, for a separate line item, telling us what in your bid you're building in for medical insurance for those substitutes who are employees of our contractors but who cross over and will be eligible for medical insurance. And that is responsible for most of this increase.
Okay, alright. So 2014, January 2014?
Yes, sir.
Is going to be a red letter month?
It is, yes. So page one of that document, you see all the labor added together. The fourth line down, object code 116 is teachers. In that line item, you see our regular ed teachers added to our special ed, to our vocational teachers, and our adult ed teachers. When we go to the 31-page document, then you see special ed teachers standing by themselves. So we are currently in this, and this is just, it is a draft. I, Mr. Odom and Mr. Zago and I have talked quite a bit. I don't think we will go any higher in the number of positions we're requesting. Hopefully, we can lower it a bit, but it's probably reasonably close to where we will wind up.
Once again, the chart is showing, and we'll stay with the 116 line, a 4.2% increase.
Right.
And that is from 2012-13 budget to 13-14?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the 5.9% budget increase, that's from 11-12 to 12-13?
No, I'm sorry. The 5.9 in black, the black numbers represent dollars. So the 5.9 is the increase in dollars.
From which year to which?
From 2013, comparing 2013-14 to 2012-13.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 11-12 is just given to us as a reference, but none of the percentages refer to it?
None of the percentages relate back to 11-12.
Okay.
Yeah, I figure I've got enough numbers in this format, but... But this page, this shows you all of the staff and all of the employees we have in the general purpose school budget.
Well, that 108.9 is pretty much Stewart's Creek High.
Stewart's Creek High, yes, sir.
And you, what did you kind of use as a growth figure that we developed that? We'd used about two and a half, three?
I'm trying to be comfortable with two and a half to three.
So it includes some of that too? And so you realize that if we grow by 2% or 2.5%, there will be state dollars come in. This doesn't mean all of this comes from local.
Right.
State dollars come in as you get more students, but ADM comes in too. So again, the revenue piece, we don't have all of it, but you know that. When you grow, the ADM follows that growth.
Yes.
And we typically do not hire those until, until they prove, you know, the principals will tell you. It'll be often right after we start the school, unless we know some reason like Stewart's Creek High, which we'll do some, but typically within that first two or three weeks of school, and you've been there, you know what we're talking about. You know, I'm up this number of students. I need another math teacher, right? And then we look at the numbers, submit your schedule, then make the decision. Tell them how it works.
And then change a lot of schedules. They could have been changed three weeks before.
If we kind of know it, we will go ahead sometimes and do it. If we can do it, we'll do it ahead of time, you know, typically.
Well, and this is one of the areas where our, just our long-term level of growth has really affected us in items like teaching staff, because we, we have had to, so much of our local revenue, the shift has been pennies into the debt service fund to help build the schools we need. And that's been a long-term trend for us. Our sales tax numbers have been growing.
As a reference for positions typically, I think last year we had, this year of course, 1,000 new students, 519 the year before. That was 60-something positions close to between 16 and 17. And then I have seen it as high that year, we had 1,600 employ, 1,600 new students and all, to about 160-something employees. So it, it tends to mirror, but you know, even if you don't have it in your budget, if say instead of two and a half, it came in three and a half.
Yeah.
Well, you know there's going to be state dollars from it, so what you winds up having to do then is begin to amend the budget as we go through the year to reflect those additional state dollars and additional growth. But this is the estimate now, about two and a half.
So under the, with the bus owners, we're adding nine, Mr. Sandvik requested nine buses?
Yes, there are nine buses in there. We are going to have to amend in additional funds this year for the fuel price adjustment. So I've done an estimate of that number and built that number. I'm not ready to do that amendment, but I have built what I anticipate that into next year's budget.
That's line 315, if you follow the question.
On the second page.
What he's asking about. Mr. Blair is asking about that one.
Back to personnel. What does the, what does the state do for things all the way from the superintendent down through custodial staff? Is there, is there a budgetary formula that they use?
The BEP formula, just the pages I get. I don't get the detail on the transportation. I just get a summary number from the state. I have a separate spreadsheet in the file that I use for a whole nother set of positions. And, but their file that they send me is four pages of formulas. You look at your growth. It's a weighted average of the second, third, sixth, and seventh attendance periods. And depending on what grades they're in, you generate positions by the EP formula. Elementary, middle, secondary, vocational, depending on your special ed count, special ed positions, and then there, there are pieces in the formula that cover a great many things, down to custodians. That's based on square footage.
I guess the simple fact that the state does have appropriation, everything from the superintendent to the, to the custodial staff to operate a school.
It doesn't have much administrative, central office administrative at all, some.
If my memory serves me correct, the area, like the 1.0 weight was typically, not beginning elementary, but the elementary grades as you went up through middle and high, it tends to be weighted a little bit higher. Special education is weighted based upon the degree of service. You know, option, you remember from option one to option 11 or 12, as the service option goes up, then the weight for that student goes up. So like 1.0 would be the minimum teacher that they would pay. And then based on the grade and the enrollment in those, that varies a little bit up and down.
Yeah. And they do, the BEP formula, I believe this year's number that they used funding those positions is 38,800. Our average teacher pay is well above that. Everything above that, some of that 38.8, we fund, and we fund 100% of everything above that. So we fund well over 40% of our teacher pay out of our local funds.
So when we talk about the 1.5%, number one, is that a recommendation or is that statute?
We don't know this year.
That is what the Department of Education, the governor are basically proposing. See, we're, like I say, we're still early. The state has not completed their budget. So it could come out less, it could come out more, and we'll have to adjust when that happens.
But that is 1.5% of the 38.8 that they?
That is the piece they plug into the funding formula. Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we would use local funds too, if that were an across-the-board raise, for the difference.
For the difference for every certified employee and then the entire amount for every classified, right?
And that is the way our board has done it for the last several years. Match the certi, the certified and classified, try to give them the same percentage raise.
And all of the numbers that you have reflect that trend?
Yes, sir.
Not to muddy the water, but I'm going to. If this voucher proposal that a number of representatives or legislators have signed on to amendment to the governor's proposal, all of this could be mute because, because of the dollars that could, that could come away from our budget.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's what's terrifying to me right now, is what this amendment could do to, to the entire state and, well, just our budget alone with, you know, from all the way from teachers to transportation to, to everything.
It's a little over $1,800 for the minimum. If, if it passes as it's being, actually, it's a separate bill. I think Grisham has matched it to the governor, but I think it's actually separate. And she, it was the minimum amount, and you told me it was 1,800 and something dollars per position if the voucher, if, if somebody went with the voucher. You know, the question is, and that's to be worked out too, is it somebody that's ever been in our school system or not? You know, if they've never been with us, now there's, part of the bill is in there now. One group kind of says it's, had to have been to public school the year before. Another group says, well, let's open it to everybody, and all of that's still to be determined.
Where are those times right now?
Well, and just, yeah, really not trying to hold stuff back at all. The meeting where hopefully we will get a lot of guidance on this from the financial side is April 30th and the 1st and 2nd of May. So we're still six weeks out from that. And, and the state does not know the answers yet, so we will be tweaking this, probably.
Tweaking, tweaking.
I'm being optimistic.
Yes.
We can drop, put these down in these Dropbox. As you noticed, you had that Dropbox icon. So version one, version two, or whatever. And if you want it for reference, you can actually go back. It is making it to be so many. I don't know. We'll see how that works, but you would be able to compare by going back to that Dropbox.
Top of page two, there are seven lines for employee benefits. Social Security, Medicare, health insurance, we have life insurance, unemployment compensation, and other fringe benefits. I've, I did change the, at our last meeting, I had built in an 8% increase effective January of 2014. We had a meeting about two weeks ago with our insurance consultants. I increased that to 16% that may, we have another meeting late next week. 16% may not be adequate for that.
The term I, the percentage I keep hearing out there is 25. I hope that's not right. That's what I keep reading.
We did have a little over a six, not quite, around 6,250,000 deficit last fiscal year, year ending July, in the countywide medical insurance plan. We had, it was a bad year for our plan. We have to make that up and then anticipate future trends, which is always the tricky part. Because we are anticipating for what will be happening. We're trying to set rates now for what will happen in January of 2014.
And that's why I asked you about the subs, because I didn't know that we actually knew how that was going to flow.
The proposal that we will be recommending actually, and I, I feel better about this one. It may be a little too low, and they may come back to us, and it's a year, we can extend that contract for two more years. They may come back wanting an increase for that. I, a lot of the subs, I do not think will be eligible for medical insurance under that, but some of them will, and yeah.
So what you're saying is that they, they may have missed the mark in their bid?
They may have, but I think it's, it may, it may be a little on the low side, or it may be very realistic. They have, you have good data, so.
He's talking about line item 207. You know, we said, he said 16%. The reason you're looking at 13.4 is because August through December is at one rate, and January 1st, the high rate kicks in. So that's why you're looking at a 13.4, because of the, it changes in January 1st, so that's the difference.
And we don't really know what the rate is going to be in January 1st?
They've told him even in local, it may go as high as 24%.
Yeah.
So we don't know.
Offer some additional explanation on line 299?
Yes. That is the $63 per covered life, basically reinsurance fee that we will be charged in 2014. We are a self-insured plan, so we will have a $63. Okay, my wife and I are on my insurance. The fee for me would be $126. If you were single, it would be 63. If you had eight kids and your wife, it would be $630. That is our initial number on that fee. And Lisa wanted to put it in this line to kind of separate it from our pure medical insurance.
And that's a new fee?
Yes, sir, for the next three years. And that, there might even be some question as to whether or not, there's a chance it will swing into our next fiscal year, into the 14-15 school year. I, again, that's something we will be looking at.
And where did that fee?
It is part of the Healthcare Reform Act to help cover with the costs with the uninsured people coming into the insurance plans. But it is a tax, Lisa views it as a tax.
Would it be possible with that 13.4, that if you change the amount employees pay, that some of the revenue for that piece might come from the insured? Or is this only ours?
This, I left the split, the employer-employee split as it currently stands in this version. That is one of the options we will be looking at next week and at the insurance committee. We will also, we also ask the consultants to propose some adjustments to our insurance. We have three insurance options. So they're trying to come up with a package that will hold the increase down, hopefully for both our employees and for us, the employer. But, you know, we don't know at this point.
I know we audited for coverage where we might have dual or overlapping coverage or anything like that. Are there provisions in that fee for dual or overlapping coverage?
I don't know that there are, but that...
Kind of a rare instance.
Well, I mean, you do have it some.
Okay.
And that is one of the options we will be discussing, or that our consultants are looking at and that may come up, is there some, somewhere we go there. We don't know. This is the one line item that I think could go up. I'm hoping my 16% will cover us, but we'll, we'll just have to see how that unfolds. The, the balance of that page, various contract services and getting into our materials and supplies. These pieces outside of the payroll, once March, we close March, I will be looking at where we are this year and budget requests and all, and I will do some tweaking in this next section. It should, it, I'm thinking I will add no more, I've been trying to think top side, a quarter of a million to 500,000. I hope it's zero, but I may see some increases as I compare current year trends. And just by the time March hits, we only have three more months of school, and I'm a lot more comfortable in making those projections.
How broad is 432 library books? Is that, does that have to be paper, or does that include some technology?
It, we have had some technology. It has been, and some subscriptions to online services. We provide some of that at the central office level. Some schools have done it. A lot of that, it tends more to be books and processing supplies at this point. One of the things Mr. Odom and I have discussed is there have been some requests that, well, maybe we need to get more Common Core oriented library materials. Well, maybe that's what this allocation could be.
Nonfiction is big in the Common Core.
599.
Yes. That is one of those that is all over the place. You really have to look at the individual, the function that, coming from, I think of it as a department. Look at where it is in that function. Instruction has the biggest piece. Uh, instruction has the biggest piece, which ties to driver's ed and some minor refunds that flow through there. But that, that one is spread out. Mrs. Bell uses it to separate different types of contract services within special ed. That's probably the next biggest use of it. Uh, the drug testing in the transportation department is coded to five ninety-nine. So, but when we go into the individual pages, you'll see how that breaks out there.
I thought I saw something that had investigation, no, that.
Yeah, and that would be in the transportation department, yes, sir. Yeah, five thirty-three, those are the, uh, the fingerprint tests and, uh, the fingerprinting and the background checks we do for new employees.
I'm pleased to see anything that goes down, uh, and yet surprised. There are four items there that, uh, that have negative increases, and yet we're bringing online Stewart's Creek. Are, are we sacrificing?
I, I don't think so, really. And some of these, as I look at these items more in with my March balances, some of them may drift up a bit. Uh, our vehicle and insurance, our vehicle and equipment insurance has dropped off a bit in recent years because we have higher deductives, that dual-edged sword. And that, that's probably some of what you'll see in buildings contents insurance, one of the, the thirty-nine thousand dollar drop. And I, I will be looking at those, and the courthouse maintains the reserves since we are self-insured to such a large degree. And I'll be getting updates on that from a lane short in the courthouse.
Mr. Odom, I don't guess there's any way that we could project if we had not gone with the metal roofs and the geothermal and the, the lights and the, the sensors?
Well, let's, let's talk about this. Um, Jeff, what you're gonna see when you get to utilities in there, basically, it looks like we've made it through this year without having amended additional monies in it. And it looks like we might be able to use this figure basically for next year. So that tells me that there's a save in there, quantify it, quantify it to which one is the lights and which one is the other, is a little bit more problematic. But when you look at that whole figure and you're not having to go up, even though you're adding additional buildings and things like that, of course, the climate and the weather, all of that affects it and given here too.
Well, what would be, what would be really cool is to be able to go to the funding body and say, because of this, this has been saved over the years, but I don't guess there's any way to really do that without an expensive study.
The only way that you could possibly do something with that would be to say something like, per pupil. Back end so-and-so, utility cost was X dollars per pupil. Because that, cause I mean, that taking your buildings and all and everything, and then you come back and you say, well, and this year it was X dollars per pupil. And we might, could, could look at that, but I mean, there's other factors in it too, I don't know.
The last time, and you, Mr. Blair and Mr. Hodge were here, we had, we had a year when the rates went crazy on us in the spring, winter and spring. We had to amend a couple of million dollars in that year. Uh, sometimes it is rate-driven. Natural gas is running low. So there, there are a lot of factors in evaluating that. And, and one of the, when I've tried to get in and look at it in more detail, one of the things is that tying the weather that we experienced, which can be very challenging. I, I still think, and you'll see one of our bright spots. Our debt service, we have paid off the first, the light reworking that we did. So that debt service part of our budget will drop. And, uh, Mr. Clarity and I were very comfortable, that project at the rates we were paying before the rates went up was paying for itself nicely, so. The next grouping that I have, bottom third or so of that page and continue to the next page, is the different equipment categories. And again, you'll, you see the details as you look at the different pages. There are two major increases.
Yes.
We are getting, well, the plan is that we will get to help us with the park implementation, uh, not quite two point two million.
What he's put in there is the projections of Rutherford County's share of that one-time fifty-one million from the governor.
Yeah.
So for purposes, for you to look at us now, he's divided in to the two places there. The seven oh nine, some of it in equipment, uh, and some of it in bandwidth and all of the other things. But it's gonna be two point one if that's what we get, regardless of, of how that's divided. And you're, Mr. Nipper, you're on that committee, that's what y'all are looking at now, trying to decide where and what.
And we do have built into this budget, uh, we have a two hundred meg pipeline, internet pipeline to Nashville, uh, for fifteen, not quite fifteen thousand, six hundred, we can go to the new max, which is four hundred and fifty meg, and we do have that built into our budget.
This is not monies from local, this would be state monies for that one-time
Yeah.
uh, technology upgrade, based on what the governor said.
Hope he comes through.
Yes, we're budgeting. Steve and Amy are bank planning to spend it. Okay, on the fourth page, everything that you see budgeted at this point is related to our debt service. And the only debt service we have on our books in the general purpose fund relates to our energy conservation projects. We've got bonds, notes, and, uh, capital leases. That's why it's in all those different line items. But we, you can see that six hundred thousand dollar drop where we did pay off that first issue of loans.
Can you go to the next one?
Okay.
Touch it one time at the top, and you'll see documents again, go back.
This one is, I, I get a little. Twenty-fourteen GPS budget draft zero three fourteen. It's, uh, one hundred three point six kilobytes.
Set the thirty-one page.
And they'll be, well, it depends on what you've done, where they appear, yeah. This is, this is in the middle, at the bottom of the page, it will say page one of thirty-one. Okay, okay. And in governmental terms, this, this version of the budget is by function, kind of major area that the way the state has us break our budget down. Seventy-one, one hundred is the regular education program, elementary and secondary. No special ed, no vocational, they are in separate lines. And, uh, under the three-digit numbers are the object codes. So the teachers, that you saw them on page one of the four-page document, well, this is how many of those teachers are regular ed. Kindergarten through twelfth-grade teachers. And the, the format, as far, as far as columns and color, is the same. The position information is in blue, and the dollar, dollar-related information is in black. And just in case, I do not use red, I'm a little colorblind and I cannot always tell red from black. I tried that one meeting and it was an unmitigated disaster. So I, I don't show negative numbers as red, never. So, uh, of our, this draft, nearly two hundred and ninety-nine million dollars, one hundred and sixty million of it, the bottom of this page, is the regular instruction program. And you'll, you'll see in that first line of detail, right under the seventy-one, one hundred, regular education program, elementary, secondary, are regular teachers. This year's budget, I'm sorry, the twenty thirteen, fourteen draft that we're looking at is one hundred four million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred seven dollars, two thousand, two hundred twenty-three point seven. And we always have some fractional, we have some teachers on job shares. Uh, we've had high school teachers who taught, teach four-sevenths, four periods out of a full day, who, who want a part-time job, or something like that, so we, we always have some weird counts there. Uh, this current year's budget is ninety-eight point seven million for that. The one point five percent raise, the, the teachers, and I go, I, I've cut it off in my spreadsheet now, but as payroll has gotten notification of new degrees, I have gone in for those people and put them in for next year's budget. So that's some of the raise, and then our new positions.
And that's one point five certified and classified.
Yes, sir.
You're actually, your classified is gonna show up in another, on another page here.
Just those are the career ladder program, one seventeen and one twenty-seven, the career ladder extended contract. Those are state flow-through monies. And we do wind up using some local funds for career ladder extended contract now. That, that number has been cut year by year since I've been here. Our educational EAs are there. And in the, just so, ROTC is line one eighty-nine, other salaries and wages. Most all of that is ROTC. Some of the supplements that we pay, that y'all approve, will flow through there. So sometimes you'll see them there, but they should be moved out when they are reimbursed. But that, that's essentially the, the cost of our ROTC program. And that is why we have that increase this year, because opening Stewart's Creek High. It, it shows up there as a large percentage in a small group.
Now, what was the deal between Eagle ORTC and Stewart's Creek?
Working on that.
He's, uh, yeah, he, one, um, probably the primary will be Stewart's Creek and then an auxiliary, but he, he works that out with the Department of the Military, the funds part of this, so.
I have fun, I have put in the budget on the high side. But Colonel Houchen's plan is, you know, may come in a little bit less than that. And then the next section you see below, the payroll taxes and benefits for the employees on this page. Again, our, this is our largest group of employees, so you're going to see most of the dollar increase. Where we've got it in medical insurance this year, you're gonna see most of it right on this page. The, that sixty-dollar, sixty-three-dollar per covered life tax as part of healthcare, I am recording that in on the page for the Board of Ed. Again, trying to keep it separate so we can easily go back and isolate that. That, that, we've had several things come across over the years. If it's something out of the normal trend, we, we can charge it someplace like that.
So where are you recording that, you say?
It, it is in the Board of Ed page, which is function seventy-three, two-ten.
We already looked at.
Well, we'll see it as we, as we page here.
Oh, okay.
You can see it there. And then that, I don't know, not quite the bottom half, is contract services, material supplies, other charges, again, in this department. And then the instruction equipment is, the equipment subtotal is just one line by itself. And that increase is due to the money we anticipate getting from the state for the, getting us ready for the park program.
That's part of that two point one million there, that, that first parts.
Next page down, we report our alternative schools separately, and that this was, this has been a change since I got here. So Daniel McKee and Smyrna West, just the cost of those programs.
How are we space-wise with alternative schools?
We're mobbing door.
Well, I understand that.
Basically, you know, we've had the same space, um, and so their number's around a hundred and twenty-five or so, so basically, um, we'll rotate some out and some back, typically what happens.
At what point would we have to add space, cause it's not been done in a while?
No. Uh, we had portable, we added some portables at Daniel McKee, um, is about done what we've done, and, and also Smyrna West. That's, it's been portables, right? I mean, we have increased it, but it's been by portables.
Is there, is there a thought process somewhere, somewhere down the line, we'll have to add a third site or add on to one of those sites or, or whatever? I mean, how far are we looking at, had to do that?
Yeah, we could use it, uh, it just hasn't, in the priority of trying to house students, it's just, that's been the issue. Um, you, you see, one of the things, I really like our system better than others in, in many other districts. What happens across the state in school districts, very often they'll do something like, it, it's almost like a sentence, like, um, you will spend twenty days at the alternative school, bam, or you've got thirty days, or you've got six months, and they go to this alternative school. But what we do, when somebody rolls into alternative school, and the reason I like it is, we place you there. Then we have a point system where you earn your way out. So what you do is you put the, for lack of a better vernacular, we put the ball back in the court of the student, that their behavior and their performance there helps them get out quicker.
Sure.
So when you have that, sometimes it takes a little longer than as if you were sending people there for one month or six weeks or whatever it is, but, uh, that's worked pretty well for us for, for some time. Some of the zero tolerance and that sort of thing, maybe they're all year, that sort of thing. It kinda depends upon the severity of punishment.
I, I was thinking we'd kind of try to go fairly quickly through these pages. Stop me if you've got any questions, any illuminations you wanna give, Mr. Odom? Our next one down on page three of thirty-one is the Special Education Department. We have the teachers here are for Stewart's Creek High and growth.
It'll roughly take about six probably special ed staff Stewart's Creek High.
And when we're looking at positions, when you look at like, one sixty-three, the educational assistance, one of the challenges that we have is we have nine, ten, and twelve-month hourly employees. My, the hourly staff I report as a full-time equivalent. I couldn't get my head around anyway, uh, you know, building in the logic, well, if you're a custodian for these hours, I count you as this much, but if you're for two thousand eighty-eight, I count you as one. It didn't work. So I, I do a full-time equivalent on those people. Uh, a salary position is either one, or it's a half if it's full-time, but, but, um, that is more than. more than five-point-eight EAs that we are increasing. It's, I think it's nine. But it's because that's one of the really, essentially that is a nine-month position out of twelve. Next page, page four thirty-one is vocational program. Most of those additional teachers are for Stewart's Creek High, as is the clerical position.
The Perkins Grant, is that?
The Perkins Grant is in a federal project, totally separate budget that will, you'll, you'll approve when you, as you approve federal projects.
Okay, we did not take any administrative cost out of Perkins?
No. The next page, page five, is the adult education program. On this one, we do, you see drops here. We have, we had to apply for our grant in totally different process. And we are, I have built into the budget what we requested in our grant, which saves us, if it is approved, about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand of what we were paying.
We basically asked the labor and workforce development to pay a greater share because we are furnishing building utilities and other things too, so.
We, we used to be able to count those kids towards our graduation rate. There was incentive for us to build the program up. When that went away, I don't know. Page six, the attendance department. And, uh, one of the changes there, uh, Mr. Odom reassigned Shane Morgan to report to the attendance department. So in next year's budget, I am showing him up there, and I need to change that caption to other staff. But that, that is our change there. He used to be in central and other. The next page is health services, our nurses. All of our nurses are in the, out in the GPS budget, but that next line down, other salaries and wages, that is, we have some of those folks also in federal projects. Your, uh, your occupational therapy assistants, occupational therapists, they hit there. We added a nurse for Stewart's Creek High. Page eight, other student support. Most of the staff here is guidance counselors. But we also, we have the safety program here. We have the, the graduation coaches here. There's some other pieces, but, but those are the types of expenditures you see there. And we have the SROs, item three oh nine, contracts with government agencies. Most of that is the SROs at Holloway, Holloway, I'm sorry, Daniel McKee and Smyrna West. We pay a large part of there, of those SROs. Uh, that is where we have the charges from the Sheriff's Department for security. And that actually is responsible for a lot of the increase in that line item. That has gone up.
Is that ball games, is that ball games?
Where it flows through.
And, uh, our athletic trainers are down in that three ninety-nine. Even though it shows a decrease, we are, of course, picking up an athletic trainer for Stewart's Creek High. Tried to do some cleanup between those line items, trying to be more consistent. Three twenty-two, again, right below the contracts with government agencies, our testing budget. Another healthy expenditure we have there. Going on down to page nine, now we have, this is, and this is not purely it, of course, but we, we already had a regular education page, seventy-one, one hundred. Well, seventy-two, two-ten is the instruction department, but it also includes librarians. It includes the STSs. So there are other positions that are out in the schools that show here. The majority of this department is out in the schools, but we do have some central office staff.
So one thirty-eight there, as we're looking at possibly putting three additional STSs. The problem we're about to run into is online testing, um, is to get people out there, 'cause when you start testing to, to make corrections and, and to make things go. So we're actually looking at maybe, we actually cut some last year or something, but now that this testing is gonna start in fourteen, fifteen, we may put a few this year and a few the next. And these, I think, are mostly slated for middle.
Yes.
We're down to a half, just part-time and some, every high school still has a full-time. Your elementary and middle share a lot, but it's, it's an adjustment to get ready for the testing, plus assist the teachers.
This one runs on to two pages, but, uh, dropping down to page eleven, this is the alternative schools. Well, their principals, the state has them coded as supervisors instead of as principals. But we have their librarians, their clerical staff, their custodians, and their guidance counselors here. It's just a weird mix. Page twelve, the special ed program. The psychologists are the big group here that are out in the schools, but they do show here rather than direct student expenditure. And then we have Mrs. Bell and Miss Lewis, who are the supervisor, director in the category there. And dropping down to page thirteen, we have the vocational, Mrs. Nixon and her assistant, Ms. Roberts. And dropping to page fourteen, we have the adult education. That is Mr. Herbert and most of the clerical staff. Same thing. Uh, you don't see too many drops on this page, but this is part of that reducing our, what we have been supporting that program. Page fifteen. Yes, sir.
Back on, uh, page twelve, on special ed?
Yes, sir.
Where do you get such an increase on that? You've still got the same amount of positions?
There have probably been shifts in degree and experience that I have not yet, I haven't done my amendments to the current year budget. So Mrs. Lewis is new in that position. I would say her degree is probably higher than, than her predecessors right off. Probably the same thing in the psychologists. In a, in a smaller group of people, if we hire one or two with a higher degree or more experience, it, it's a visible change. But they're all paid based on that degree experience. Yeah, we haven't made changes to the indexes or any of that, but it's, it's degree experience driven. There was one of the departments where the medical insurance was going up fifty percent. It was a small department. We had more people this year who opted in open enrollment to sign up for our insurance. Or, you know, we had more employees with spouse and children covered, which costs us more as an employee. In the small departments, it stands out. Is that?
Yeah.
All right. Page fifteen is the Board of Ed that I mentioned. And I need to change, I need to change a couple of descriptions, sorry about that. What we, the state, let me make a note. The state kind of, over the years, changes the guidance for how we use a category. After discussing with Mr. Odom, it would be better for our staff attorney and Mr. Evans to be up here rather than down in central and other. Central and other has become more technology slowly over the years. It used to have personnel in it. It really was central and other. The state has kind of moved in more to technology. So I'm, I was moving anyone who wasn't technology elsewhere in the budget. These are existing positions, but, you know, no, no change in compensation other than whatever was covered by salary schedules, but moving them up here, and I will change that caption to other salaries and, but, you know, that, that is our change there. The medical insurance line, most all of that is retirees. And that, that is a number that is growing on us year by year. And then in two ninety-nine, that's where you'll see the sixty-three-dollar per covered life, where we've got it there so it'll stick out. We, we discussed the trustees commission, I emailed y'all. About eighty-nine point six is returned to county general. And, but that comes from all of the cities, and it isn't just county government. There are other governments that do pay that also. Our workers' comp, I may be able to lower that number, I'm hoping. I haven't heard for certain yet, but left a pie. And our workers' comp is an on-the-job injury program. And the next one down is Mr. Odom's office, and, uh, there'll be no changes there. Page seventeen is the office of the principals. The principals, the assistants, school bookkeepers, secretaries, and the school attendance clerks. We do have additional hours budgeted, line item one sixty-two, attendance and guidance clerks. We think we will be in training for the new attendance system, and we will need those hours.
Let me explain some of this now. You see, the reason you're not seeing a plus there with Stewart's Creek, remember you employed them to start, so they actually show up in our twelve, thirteen.
Yeah.
But you actually had them here last year, for them to start you on January one, so that's why for thirteen, fourteen, it's not new, and that's why you don't, it doesn't show there. And as he's saying, star, the star computer program will go one more year. The state's supposed to be bidding it out. Uh, so if we got forty-six schools next year, sometime in June or so, we're about to bring in those people on a new system and do the training to be able to start schools. So he puts in full-time equivalent type positions, but it's really not more positions, it's extra hours for people who are gonna have to train for another month, basically with all forty-five of them, or maybe two months.
And we may need more of that in the fourteen, fifteen budget. Page eighteen is the accounting and purchasing department. Page nineteen is the human resources department.
The clerical personnel, got twenty-nine thousand dollar increase, what is that?
It's line one sixty-two, seventy-five, five, twenty-one, sixty-two.
Seventy-five, okay, okay. Yes, we had one more position that was in central and other. And, uh, the secretary who works with, uh, Miss McLeod and Mr. Evans, amongst others, I moved her up into there. It is not a new position, it's just moving it, because she does not work with techno, the technology department at all.
You got the same amount of positions both years.
He, he changed it from another category.
I know, but you, you're increasing the position. Instead of four, you got five, should have five in.
I'll check on that, and that may just be a quirk in the way I pulled positions.
Maybe.
I may be able to see it down. Okay, it's the way I was able to show a classified person. If you go to page twenty-three, that position used to show as a position in one sixty-two. I had, and it's, it's a quirk in the way I have pulled the numbers, I'm sorry. In, in seventy-two, eighteen, one sixty-two, you see the opposite. You see a drop and you see the same number of positions, the two offset. And I, I.
You just, in two thousand twelve, thirteen, on one sixty-two, you should have had two in there.
Right, and.
I understand what you're doing.
It's, it's the way I'm trying to account, the way in my spreadsheet that pulls into my database, when I show a new, a, a new general, a new account number for an existing staff member, I'll, I'll have to figure something to fix that. But if you add, put those two lines together, they offset.
Oh, I understand. I, I, but I'm looking at your sheet here, that's what I'm getting at.
That may just have, basically have to be a manual fix in this, that my stuff won't pick up. But I will, I've got a note to get that fixed for, for our next version. And the ideal way to fix that would be to make the, the change in the amendment in the current year, and then that would take care of it. But I, I, I'm, yeah, okay. Ready to go back to page twenty? Operation of plant, the custodians, lawn mowing, and utilities. Primary expenditures there. And, uh, as Mr. Odom mentioned, I think our total utility numbers should hold. I, I will be analyzing those also. I, I have a, a staff member who keeps spreadsheets for me, and I will be, as I have more data to look at, I'll go in and see where we think we're going on that.
Four fifty-four, how, how do we reduce the water and sewer from eleven, twelve to?
The reason for that was our last energy conservation project was new plumbing fixtures, and we may, I budgeted the savings in water. I probably should have budgeted more of it in gas, in natural gas for heating of water and all. We're, Mr. Clardy and I are looking at that one. But that's why we budgeted a drop.
Would the gray water make any difference there? Because maybe back, uh, when we switched from having like seagull now, where you use the gray water, not having to use as much fresh water? That could be part of it there, 'cause we, this is about the timeframe we tapped into that. That could be.
It's good to see a reduction, I was just wondering how we got there.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that is where I tried to build in some savings from that. That's, that, that is one I will be looking at as we get more data with Mr. Clardy.
I just wanted to interject that I have a meeting tomorrow to look at some software so we can enter all of our current bills, but adjust for weather, but adjust for price increases and those types of things, so that we can do a better job tracking, um, our savings. And, uh, that's also part of the energy policy and part of the plan and solve that as well, so I'll bring that forward.
Page twenty-one is the maintenance department. First year we have a school open, it's under warranty. We add a maintenance position for that the next, in its second year. Typically is the way we have worked.
I just, look, I, I know same thing, I just, like, my comment, uh, Mr. Clardy, it looks like you, you're gonna have the same amount of people for two years back, I mean, it'd be three years, I guess, won't you? Sixty positions? I mean, is that, yes, my question is, is that enough to cover what you're, what you're doing?
I think we can. We'll, Stewart's Creek High School will be under warranty for the next year, so I wouldn't expect you to get two new employees. so I wouldn't expect to get two new employees, at least two new employees the following year.
If I was to work order numbers to go the other way, then we'll know, won't we?
Page twenty-two is the transportation budget. A change there is the additional routes, building in more money for the fuel price adjustments. Page twenty-three is central and other, which is, again, is becoming the technology department. And after I figure out how to fix between personnel and this, yeah, it will only be technology staff there. The, over in the current year, in the twelve thirteen, you see those positions that are being moved up out of the technology department. That's the difference there. And again, my count numbers, I'll figure something out on that. And then we have a million sixty thousand dollar increase at the bottom of that page as our plans for that state money for technology.
The piece of that, two point one million.
Community services, page twenty-four. We have, it's one of the United Way things that you can pledge your money to. It's a charitable children's fund that the attendance department runs. And that is donations that come through and are used for the attendance teachers buy clothing for needy students.
And that funding comes from United Way. Just to flow through again, then spend out on the, actually the clothing for the people that need it.
And the next page down is our preschools. And this is the special ed preschools that are in the general purpose budget, plus the governor's voluntary preschools. A grant covers most all of our expenditures for the governor's voluntary. Well, the special ed preschool, it's a general purpose school. We have to identify and serve those kids. And the last page is, we have a little money in for capital outlay. If some, if a design needs to be done for something that is not yet an approved project in one of the building or the capital projects funds, it gets charged here, little items like that. And then we have our debt service on the remaining pages here. You know, all that is established, I just look at the schedules and update the numbers for the next year. And that takes us down to this draft version, page thirty-one of thirty-one. Two hundred ninety-eight million, six hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars.
Well, you did a good job, Mr. Sandvitz.
Thanks, sir.
Lot of codes.
Yes.
Very well laid out.
You know, when you look at the percent, you see, we built into it, at least two and a half of that percent increase is more students coming in, for which should be more state money coming in. So when you look at that, it's not all of that, it's not local money now.
Yeah.
Sometimes when it gets looked at the commission, they say, oh my, you, you know. But it really, it's the split between the two, only part of that would be local.
And we just do not, it's too early to even venture any revenue numbers. But we should see a nice increase in our state funding. That, once we have that piece, and I'm looking at March numbers, we can be refining this. And hopefully, we, our joint meeting, I don't remember which day it is in May, with the Health and Ed and Budget Committee here, we should have a pretty good set of numbers by that point. And even at our next meeting, I will have seen my first, well, normally I will have gotten my first estimate of our BEP funding. Some years, they don't have all of the new factors in, so that, some years that estimate is very good. Once in a while, it isn't so good, it depends on what's going on at the state level. And I don't mean that as an arrow at the State Department of Ed, it's just some things haven't been decided on when that first estimate comes. The other files that we, you can read over at your leisure are the principals' requests. And I think I mentioned earlier, Mr. Clardy uses those a lot, the maintenance and the capital project items. And the other items, we tend to use more to evaluate, okay, we're really getting cries for attendance clerks. These are the sorts of things that, and the technology sheet Steve uses a lot. These are the things we're being asked for by the schools and, yeah. Unfortunately, a lot of them, we don't have the resources to address, but we do, we do pay attention to those. And I do go through, because there have been some questions in the past. After they come in, I go through and I look at which pot of money they would be covered. And I will move them around, because I've had staff requests on a technology request before. I don't know how they made that connection, but once in a while, there'd be something that would be totally out of category. Well, I move it to where the money, the pot of money is. So some, I know a few years ago, there were some complaints made to one of the board members. Well, it wasn't even in the list. I had moved it to the appropriate type of request. And that's not a lot of things, but it does happen.
I guess, if I understand you right, on these, all these requests from the principals, they're all not taken care of?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, I understand that.
Another twenty, thirty million dollars.
I understand.
Yeah.
I guess my next question is, who determines what's taken care of?
Well, I, Mr. Odom and I discuss.
We take, what do we do with a lot of things? When I was over instruction, where Mr. Zago is now, from requests from, say, his instruction department staff want things, dibbles.
Yeah.
You know, testing or something like that, is these going in? What your supervisors basically do is sit down and will typically classify those of high importance, of medium importance, and of low priority. So as you get, if you've got the funds or the monies, you start then pulling your high priorities first in. Then you pull those medium. Now, what's happening in a lot of the principals, you'll see the technology piece they've asked for may get covered, may get covered with some of this two point one million. So again, I mean, so that number, where they want additional computers, that sort of thing?
I'm just going to say, if you look closely at those, you will see that that list has dwindled from about forty pages down to ten pages over the last several years. And at one time, those items were continuously, year after year, going on them before. And they were never taken care of. But we've got a process now where we take care of them. We make sure that every school gets something. We have to evaluate them and see who's in the greatest need. But we do try to do something for everyone. And now, the things that are left out there, hanging are large projects. So a lot of those get split over to the capital improvement until we can get funding for them. So we've made quite a bit of progress, hope to continue to make progress on them.
Safety, student performance and instruction, you know, this is the thing that you look at from our positions, you know, first. Some things, sometimes things are somewhat cosmetic or so, but again, you can see the process of how you begin to try to categorize them.
Well, I always have a couple of principals who will give me a call and say, I'm fine with what I've got, just don't take anything away from me. And having been in this growth mode for as long as we have, the staff, the classrooms have really taken, most of our discretionary money has had to go to those items for a long time now.
I think we have a lot of studying to continue to do.
I'd like to just make another comment in regards to all these requests. As Mr. Clardy said, really in the big scheme of things, you don't have a whole lot from all the different schools. I think, if you look, look at this stuff, the thing I like about it, how it's broke down. You know, by school, and you take forty-four schools, some of them, you may, you may not have two or three schools requesting stuff, which, you know, I think is pretty sharp versus what we used to. At one time, we had one school, they'd send all the requests in, that's just one big group, correct? Yeah, I like the way you got it broken out, it's, looks good.
Well, and another thing that I see in Mr. Clardy's area is, from having been here fifteen years signing the requisitions, the sorts of things that we do as routine items now, used to be, come to the board to get funding to do this piece of fence or this bit of canopy. And they are routine items for us now, but we are able to cover every year in our budget. Not everything, but, you know, we have so many things like that.
When do we meet again, Mr. Michael? I'm sorry. That's all right, I'm sorry, I should have, you usually make everything up. Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's the road.
Might be, keep that count.
We need your feedback, though. If you have questions, let us know, try our best to answer. Or if you've got projects or something else that you see, then look and let's see what we got. It's a working document.
Anybody else? Ms. Michael, you gave everybody one of these forms, did you? I think everybody's got a new form here to look it over. If you see any changes, get with me or get with Ms. Michael. Just want everybody to take a look at it, we're, we don't run into any obstacles down the road here, so. Anything else? Nothing else, we're adjourned.